Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the link shown on the screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the link shown, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing. You can only accommodate a maximum of 16 people at one time. I will call the meeting to order and ask Councilmember Flores to lead us in the flag salute.
Please join me to read our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jose. And the clerk will call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Monatua.
Here.
Councilmember Whalen.
Here.
Mayor Besseger.
Here. We come to the proclamations and presentations portion of the meeting. Tonight, we are going to be conducting a virtual tree lighting ceremony. We know that this year has been very different from 2019. Our holiday traditions this season have been disrupted due to the health measures, and our tree lighting ceremony is no exception. But we did want to continue the tradition, but in a different form. Take a look, and then we will share a few additional thoughts.
Merry Christmas, Clovis! I hope this starts a great Christmas season for you all as we light the Christmas tree. So let's do a countdown. Three, two, one. (Applause) Merry Christmas!
Okay, now, that was virtually interesting and very well done. I'd like to offer any other member of the council to say anything holiday greeting-wise before we go further. Bob?
Yeah, so, that was better than I thought it was going to be. I'm always impressed with how people are learning to adjust to the circumstances that we find ourselves in. And the way that those students were able to kind of pull it together on Zoom and meet their harmonies and do some of their dance moves was a tribute, I think, to Clark Intermediate Choir, but also the students themselves. And so it's, I think that we all really enjoy the Christmas tree lighting in the more traditional sense, but at the same time, we want to be respectful of those who are deeply concerned about, you know, the spread of this virus. And so, where you've figured out a way, I think, to navigate it so that Santa can be with his wife, and because they are closely related, they can be unmasked, and share a little Christmas cheer with us. And so, I think that I would just join in celebrating this season with all of those that are in the city of Clovis, those who are gathered here in our council chambers, our city staff who's done an amazing job this year, and my colleagues in the Clovis City Council. It has been a difficult year, at least starting since March, and I think that we are, you know, ready for a little Christmas joy. So Merry Christmas to all of you.
Echoing what my colleague suggested, I will say this was a little warmer than the normal Christmas tree lighting, so I'll just say there's a positive. There's a lot of traditions we've, physical traditions, we've given up in 2020, like the Christmas parade and the holiday parade that we've had for so many years. But in the words of one of my favorite storytellers, The Grinch, maybe Christmas is really a lot more than the events or the things. They're really about what's in people's hearts. And our community is an extraordinary place, and that is not changed by the fact that we are celebrating inside here. So, a holiday wishes to everyone in the city of Clovis, and I am grateful for my friends and colleagues up here as well.
Don?
Yeah, Merry Christmas to everyone. You know, each year, we light the tree outside, and, you know, we get to see people in person and children coming, hugging their parents, because it's usually kind of cold, and the smiles of the faces of everybody waiting for Santa and Mrs. Claus coming to take photos. I think we even provide cookies and milk for everyone to share. And I remember being in that long line, even after our council meeting with my kids, to finally meet Santa, who, you know, since it's been slow, works with for us to try to make extra income during the other parts of the year that I found out. And, you know, it's a time for children, but I think that this year especially, we adults need to cherish Christmas with our kids and with our parents and any loved ones that we have around us. I also want to say that it's a time for us to celebrate the birth of the Prince of Peace. A time to reflect on that as well. You know, my first Christmas was in 1976. We came in November 15th, and in December, neighbors across the street brought over this tree. You know, we came from Laos, just remember that, and told us to put it in the house. And my father complied, and then days later, they brought gifts for all 11 of us. And then we joined in, we didn't, but my older brothers and sisters joined in and gave gifts to the rest of us. And, you know, we learned the Christmas spirit, just faith, peace, and giving especially. And if you look at it today, that is the character of the people in Clovis, that Christmas spirit, that Christmas spirit character. And my hope is that during this time, as we reflect, that we remember the fellow citizens who may be alone, who may be in need because of all that has been going on, and that hopefully our faith is not just words, but that, you know, like George Washington back in 1776 when he knelt in the snow to pray for independence, because he had a true faith in what he was doing, and that was in the power of prayer, and that we all do that. You know, some will say the Christmas spirit is dead because of what's been going on. I say, no, it's not. It's alive, because Clovis proves it, and we have proved it this year. And Clovis citizens carry this spirit with us year-round, and along with our staff and everywhere we go. And I think that as long as we do, as long as we set that example, I think we can never be very, very afraid, because with that spirit, you know, we trust that God is the one sure answer to all the problems that we face. So Merry Christmas to everyone.
Jose?
Christmas time's very special to me. When I was a little boy, growing up in the neighborhood just to our east, it was concentration of immigrants from Mexico. They had traditions of La Pasada, my parents, neighbors, their restaurant, La Pasada. Families would go from house to house, and there'd be a lot of lighting of Christmas trees, but the celebration was the celebration of the coming of Jesus Christ. God would give His only Son to us. It's a symbol of love, not to condemn us, but to free us, to love us. And it was very special. We were poor. We didn't know it, because we were, back in the 50s, we were a small community. We're 25% of population here in Clovis now. But back then, we were small, and we knew that if we kept our faith, if we kept working hard, we would better our lot in life. And it happened. And it was through love. It was through our faith. And that's why Christmas is always special to me. And there's so many other faith traditions that also, at this time, celebrate their holy celebrations. So I think as a nation, we should all come together as one people, and with our faith traditions and their faith traditions come together as one, and seek the eternal life that we as Christians believe in, even while we find ourselves in the midst of this pandemic, and do our best to overcome what has happened to the world. And I think we're, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and it's great to know that it's coming at the time when Jesus is also coming. So it's great times.
Thank you, Jose. We would like to take the opportunity to wish all of our citizens a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. Last year, when we gathered to light the Christmas tree and send out our best wishes, we, none of us could have imagined the difficulty that 2020 was going to bring into our lives. We've all been affected by this pandemic. Some of us have faced health crises, some of our family members have had crises, some of us have also had issues with having to isolate and the loneliness and the depression that comes from that. Many of us have faced economic fallout, especially our small businesses, during this crisis. Many of us have taken personal financial hits, too. 2020's been a difficult year, and we hope that with the vaccine on the horizon, 2021 will be a year of recovery and redemption. We want to say how proud we are of the citizens of Clovis and our city government for navigating these difficult times together. We've stuck together as a community, and we can continue to make things better by helping each other, reaching out to people that you know are sheltering in place. A nice phone call, a kind card, maybe some homemade cookies will put a smile on their face and let them know that you haven't forgotten them. I want to thank my colleagues and wish the entire citizens, all the citizens of Clovis, a Merry Christmas and a significantly much more happier 2021. We will come to the public comments portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item within the council's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to five minutes or less or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the city manager's office and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. So anyone in chambers who wish to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Good evening, Mr. Watnick.
Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here at this time of the year especially, and that was a wonderful Christmas greetings and introduction, and it's a hard act to follow, but let me try, because we've got some further good news for you. Clovis, Center Stage Clovis Community Theater has worked really hard, at our own expense, to put on a special Christmas show, Hope for the Holidays. We partnered with PBS. Can you hear me through the mask?
Yes, we can, Don.
Okay. We partnered with PBS, and originally PBS only considered maybe two nights, but they were so thrilled with the film takes that it's going to be three nights. It's going to be Saturday, December 19th, at 5:00, it's going to be on the website. It's going to be December 19th, I think it's 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, 5:00 to 6:00, probably 7:00 to 8:00, and then Sunday, 5:00 to 6:00, and Wednesday, the 23rd, at also 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a full hour. The talent that is available in this community is just incredible, and it's a joy to be a part of it. I represent Center Stage as the treasurer. I wish I had some talent to contribute, but I, but we have wonderful talent. There's a little teaser or trailer on the website. The website is centerstageclovis.com. It has the hours. And we did filming many areas within Clovis, on the steps of City Hall, at Clovis Veterans Memorial District, at the Met, in front of the Blair Church Building, Centennial Hall, I'm going to leave some out, Tarpe Station, the fire station, and Sierra Vista Mall. The music is all Christmas music. It's wonderful. And as I say, we are just very excited. I have not seen a video of this yet, but I know it's really good, because PBS would not have agreed to do it, or certainly would not have agreed on a third night if they weren't very, very excited with what has been produced. And we even had Councilmember Monatua come out one evening, and we thank you for your participation. So this is an event that I hope we can get publicized. We'd appreciate it being put on the city website, and it's going to be outstanding, truly outstanding. If I can change hats for a moment, as also the vice president of the Clovis Exchange Club, and just to update you on something that's currently going on, not completely set in stone yet, but the Clovis Exchange Club has decided, we voted to disband. We're down to very few members, but the Exchange Club has done some good things. One of the things that we have helped to sponsor and underwrite, and Lynn knows so well, the Clovis Hall of Fame. We have money in the bank, and we're working with the Clovis Community Foundation to continue to underwrite the event and provide their 501(c)(3) nonprofit status to the event. The Clovis Hall of Fame Council is still very much in existence and will continue. So the, we also have funds that are invested that we are planning to give to the Foundation for Clovis Schools to continue scholarships that we have been giving to high school, Clovis Unified High School students for many, many, many years now. So we plan to be able to continue that as well through the Foundation for Clovis Schools. This is not yet totally agreed to, but I feel pretty strongly it's going to happen. I've been talking to all of the parties, and I'm pretty sure we will have full agreement. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. Don, if you'll make sure that the clerk gets the information so that we can put that up on our website, we'd appreciate that. Any questions for Don? Lynn?
What is the timing on the potential disbanding of the Exchange Club?
We voted last month to disband, so it's going to be the end of this year, for sure. We need to transfer the funds. We have approximately 5,000 that we're planning to transfer to the Clovis Community Foundation so that they can continue to underwrite the event, and we have about 15,000 in investments that we would transfer to the Foundation for Clovis Schools to continue to fund that, the scholarships.
If my colleagues and the mayor might indulge me, maybe we could invite the Exchange Club back in January just to do a proclamation in honor of the work that you've all have done. You've been a part of this community for, the club has been a part for a long, long time and has done some really remarkable things. So if we had a chance to recognize them in public and find a way to reach out, maybe through you, and just one last celebration of the contributions that you all have made, that would be, I think that'd be important to all of you and important to us. Clovis is better because the Exchange Club is here, and so we are grateful for all that you've done. So if you can just let John, or Luke, or someone know sort of when you might be able to come back in January with the mayor's agreement, it'd be great to celebrate you all.
We would be honored, I'm sure.
Yeah, thanks, Don.
Thank you so much for your support.
Yeah.
Thank you, Don.
Merry Christmas.
Any other member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on any item not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, council members, mayor. Thank you for taking the time this evening. My name's Josh Holfer. I've been a lifetime resident of Clovis, born and raised here, raising my children, one in college, one in high school, was in high school until this pandemic, and I got another one on the way. And just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for the way you've handled the COVID situation up until this point. You know, right outside our city, we have literally Gestapos trying to close down businesses and finding them to try to make a living and provide food for their family. And I was absolutely concerned today when I seen that the Christmas tree lighting was going to be virtual. We have personal responsibility. We need to take care of ourselves. And, you know, it's something that's gone away, and it seems like that more and more we're seeing this, where we got to protect everyone. You know, we need to have the freedoms to go to these places. I know we've talked about mental health, and honestly, when I've talked to some people today, between our kids that are doing virtual schooling and everything else, the rise of depression, it's just phenomenal what the school districts are seeing right now. And today was really disappointing to me, and I just wanted to let you know in person my comments of that. I think we are a leader when it comes to the Central Valley and what a city should look like, how it's ran, how our police department handles things. And I just think the little things like this add up, and then people can use us as that excuse. Well, Clovis didn't do a Christmas tree lighting. I mean, you got Miguel Arias in the city of Fresno that wants to go knock on your door if you have more than 15 people in it to find you. And we need to be the beacon of light and hope for all these other communities around us. And like I said, up until today, I was really, I was really excited about, you know, I was proud to be a Clovis resident, and I'm always going to be proud, but today it really bothered me, and I wanted to let my voice be heard, because there's some people that probably really wanted to see that Christmas tree light, and I don't think they're going to go turn on their computers and, you know, say, oh, wow, that's, there's no excitement to that. And like I said, there is a personal responsibility. If you're affected, if you're elderly, if you have health conditions, please stay at home. It's a serious, you know, it can affect you very seriously. But for those of us that are healthy and want to have freedoms, I don't think those freedoms should be taken away, and I just wanted to say thank you for the time today.
Thank you, Josh. Any other member of the public wish to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Anyone present in chambers? I see no one. Do we have anybody on the net?
None.
Mr. Clark, did we get any email or anything?
We did not.
Okay. Just before we go further, I just want to say that the decision to do our Christmas tree lighting this year in a virtual sense was a recommendation by staff based on all of the information we'd received, but the decision was made by council. And as the titular head, if I'm The Grinch, I'm The Grinch. I'm okay with that. It's, there are times when difficult decisions have to be made. Anyway, we'll just move along. We will come to the...
Can I?
Yes, Jose.
And all the other Christmas lighting throughout the city, they're still out. Our city is still that beacon of light on top of that hill, and they're still available for all of us to go out. I know the neighborhood out at Peach and Alluvial is well-let and open, but yes, I agree with, your name's, sir, again?
Josh.
Josh. If you are vulnerable to this disease, take precautions, but there's other venues still available in Clovis if you choose to go out, but be careful.
Thank you, Jose. Regards to ordinances and resolutions with... with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution ordinance be read in full, further reading, uh, the resolution ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Uh, now we come to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature, and they are placed on the consent calendar. Uh, they are all considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. The council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent calendar items. Does any member of the council wish to have any item on the consent calendar polled? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to ha- present in chambers wish to have an item on the consent calendar polled? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
There are none.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any letters?
No.
Okay. Uh, I will, uh, close public comment on that and come back to the council for action.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we come to the public hearing portion of the meeting. A public hearing is an open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the Clovis City Council for which notice has been given and may be required. When a public hearing is continued, noticing of the adjourned item is required per government code 54955.1. Item 17, consider actions related to the annexation of territory, annexation 64, T 6123 and T 6182, northwest corner of Shaw and Highland to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Item A is consider approval of a resolution annexing territ-, territory, annexation number 64, T 6123 and T 6182, northwest corner of Highland and Shaw to the City of Clovis Facilities, Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services, and calling a special landowner election to annex territory, annexation number 64, to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1. And, uh, B, uh, res-, consider a resolution of the City of Clovis declaring the results of the special landowner election and directing, recording of the notice of special tax lien for the City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Mr. City Attorney, when, when do I read this? Do I, do I read the script now or do I, after Jay does his presentation? Okay, very good.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Actually, you get the privilege of starting here.
Very good, thank you. This is the time and place to the, for the public hearing in this council's proceedings for Community Facilities District, number 2004-1. The hearing is to acquire annexation number 64 into the district and to levy special taxes in annexation number 64. Before I formally open the hearing, is there anyone who wishes to file a written pro- protest? If so, they must be filed with the clerk now. Seeing none, the hearing is now open. We will first have a presentation by staff about annexation 64. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any oral protest from any interested person. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed.
Thank you. On October 19th, 2020, the council heard a request by the affected property owners to include territory at the northwest corner of Shaw and Highland as indicated in the detailed map and identified as CFD, annexation 64 to the city's CFD 2004-1. Tonight's actions will finalize the annexation process by holding a public hearing and property owner election.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions for Jay? Any questions or comments or protests from the audience? In chambers, I see none. Do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we get any written protests?
No.
Okay. Um, I will close the hearing and announce that we may now consider and adopt the resolution annexing, annexing territory, annexation number 64 to the Community Facilities District 2004-1, which will annex territory described in the boundary map to the district and call a special property owner election, which will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax and appropriations limit for annexation number 64.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please announce the results of the property owner vote?
Mr. Mayor, I have one ballot representing 39 votes, all in favor in indicating unanimous passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, the record shows that the property owner votes are unanimous and in favor of the levy of the special taxes and the establishment of appropriation limits. We may now proceed to the final actions for the district.
I'll make a motion, uh, resolution of the City of Clovis declaring the results of the special landowner election and directing the recording, recording of the notice of special tax lien for the City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, for Police and Fire Services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Uh, item 16, consider actions related to annexation of territory, annexation number 65, T 6050, northwest corner of Clovis and Shepherd to the City of Clovis Community Facili-, Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Item A is consider approval of a resolution annexing territory, annexation number 65, T 6050, northwest corner of Clovis and Shepherd to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services, and calling a special landowner election to annex territory, annexation 65, to the City of Clovis Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. And B, consider approval of a resolution declaring the results of a special landowner election and directing the recording of the notice of special tax lien for the City of Clovis Community Facility District, 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Uh, this is the time and place for the public hearing in this council's proceedings for Community Facilities District 2004-1. The hearing is to acquire annexation 65 into the district and to levy special taxes in annexation 65. Before I formally open the hearing, is there anyone who wishes to file a written protest? If you do, you must file them with the clerk now. I see no written protests. The hearing is now open. We will first have a presentation by staff about annexation 65. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any oral protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. Jay?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. On November 2nd, 2020, the council heard a request by the affected property owners to include territory at the northwest corner of Clovis and Shepherd and is identified in the detailed map and identified as CFD, annexation number 65 to the city's CFD 2004-1. Tonight's actions will finalize the annexation process by holding a public hearing and property owner election.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, are there any questions or comments or protests from the audience? I see none in chambers. Do we have anybody online?
None.
Mr. Clerk, were there any written protests?
No.
And we'll come back to the council for additional action. Oh, we may now consider the, and adopt the resolution annexing territory, annexation 65 to the Community Facilities District 2004-1, which will annex territory described in the boundary map to the district and call a special property owner election, which will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax and appropriation limits for annexation 65. And I'll come to council for consideration.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk please announce the results of the property owner vote?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, for annexation number 65, I have a receipt of one ballot indicating, uh, support, a vote yes, indicating unanimous passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, the record shows that the property owner votes are unanimous and in favor of the levy of special taxes and establishment of appropriation limits. We may now proceed with the final actions for the district.
I will make a motion, uh, resolution of the City of Clovis declaring the results of a special landowner election and directing recording of the notice of special tax lien for City of Clovis Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jay. Uh, item number 19, consider adoption of an ordinance, OA 2019-004 Extension, a request to adopt an urgency ordinance, the purpose of which is to extend an earlier urgency ordinance, number 19-21, adopted by, on December 16th, 2019, and extended to January 21st, 2020, which amends various sections of Title IX of the Clovis Municipal Code, Development Code, to bring the Development Code into compliance with recently enacted state laws. Dave Merchant is our presenter. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As noted, this is a request to extend existing urgency ordinance 19-21. It does address various housing-related matters. A little bit of background on the, the proposal. The original urgency ordinance is 19-21. It was adopted in December of 2019. That original adoption allowed, uh, effectiveness of 45 days for the ordinance. In order to get past that 45-day period, there was a first extension approved in January of 2020, and that extended the expiration date 12 months to December 15th of this year. The need for the ordinance was driven by new and amended state laws. Uh, really, the focus of those laws were, was the Housing Crisis Act. The majority of that legislation was enacted by the state in October of 2019. The city made a determination that compliance with the state's requirements was not achievable in the city of Clovis without the provisions of the urgency ordinance, and that continues to be where we are near the end of 2020. The urgency ordinance addresses, uh, items in Title IX of the municipal code relating to housing, uh, issues, including provisions for density bonuses, accessory dwelling units, low-barrier navigation centers, housing development project standards and procedures, and the review procedures for multifamily developments and objective standards for both single and multifamily, uh, development. If approved, this would be the second and final extension to the urgency ordinance that can be approved. And this is, uh, this extension is recommended for a variety of factors. Uh, first, there was additional housing legislation that was considered for adoption in 2020, and, uh, though not enacted yet, um, is likely to be, uh, proposed again in 2021, that would create the need for new and overlapping modifications to the code. Uh, we're hoping to avoid duplication and having to go back and amend, uh, a code that's, that's just been adjusted this year. Uh, secondly, and maybe more dramatically, uh, the city has had a shift in focus away from, uh, standard projects like this code amendment would have been to issues related to the COVID-19 state of emergency. So it's really sidetracked us, as, um, has happened in virtually every municipality across the country. Uh, as I noted, uh, the interim regulations that were adopted through the urgency ordinance will expire, uh, next week unless they're extended through this process. And we do need the provisions of the, of the ordinance in order to comply with the state's requirements on these housing issues. There are no substantive changes to the ordinance that are proposed with this extension. Uh, the expiration date would simply be moved to 12 months to December 14th of 2021. Between now and that point, uh, formal code amendments would be processed through the conventional planning commission and city council hearing processes. Um, and we would anticipate that any, uh, new slate, state legislation that occurs and is adopted between now and, let's say, the middle of 2021 would be incorporated, uh, into those, uh, traditional, uh, planning commission and council hearing processes. Based on these considerations, staff recommends that the council adopt the urgency ordinance that would extend ordinance 19-21. This is, uh, an urgency ordinance, and as such, a fourth is required. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I welcome this to the public in chambers. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, uh, do we have anybody online?
None.
Mr. Clerk, did we get any, uh, letters or anything?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for action.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 20 is consider approval, confirmation of the city manager's appointment of Planning and Development Services Director. Mr. Serpa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as council is well aware, Dwight Crowe retired last summer, and, uh, we, uh, conducted, uh, a pretty significant, uh, external recruitment, brought in, uh, about 25 applicants from across the country, put them through a, a, a very stringent, uh, vetting process, uh, including an interview with internal and external stakeholders in the process. And, uh, Renee Mathis, who has been, uh, acting as director since Dwight's retirement and was the assistant director for a year and a half before that and has been with the department for 20 years, clearly rose to the top of that recruitment effort. And, uh, it is my pleasure, pending your confirmation, to appoint her as the, uh, Director of the, uh, Development Services. Uh, Renee is here, and I'll invite her up here and say a few things, and you can grill her and, you know, have the final yes or no up. Um, but, uh, uh, she's, she's a, a, a great part of the team and really was just a perfect fit for this position. So I'll turn it over to Renee now.
Thank you. Any questions for Luke before Renee comes up? Seeing none. Madam Director?
Why, thank you. Thank you, Luke, and mayor, and members of the council. I'm excited, honored, and I feel really privileged to have the opportunity to serve as the next planning director. As I thought back to when I first started at the city, I will be honest, I didn't envision myself in this role. And to give you some perspective, John Wright was the planning director, Kathy Millicent was the city manager, and on day two, I met a council member that I was with, you know, until he was no longer with the council, and that's Terry Armstrong. Since then, I have had the pleasure to work under John Wright's leadership and Dwight's leadership, both serving as the planning director. You know, they've laid a tremendous framework for how the city grows, and my plan and goal is to continue to carry on their framework that they've set for the city, maintaining and preserving Clovis's authenticity and really being thoughtful about our future plant growth here in the city. So while, I hate to say this, I will not be the one scratching on the back of napkins. You wouldn't like that. What I am committed to do is to lead the department with an open mind, uh, place a lot of value in collaboration, good judgment, and a lot of patience, both sides. So, thank you very much. With me tonight, I have my husband, Dane, and my youngest daughter, Morgan, who's here. And I think my oldest daughter, Bryn, is supposedly watching online. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions for Renee? Comments?
Sure, I guess I'll start.
Sure, Bob.
Um, it's really been fun to, um, watch your career progress in the city of Clovis. Uh, I haven't been here as long as you have, but, um, you first, uh, came to my attention as somebody who, uh, seemed to be, uh, very well organized, uh, somebody who was aware of what was going on around them, um, was, um, instrumental in making sure that we were able to take advantage of some grant opportunities that came our way. Uh, that, um, that, that skill set of being aware and open and engaged is a skill set that I think, um, think, caused you to work well within the City of Clovis. It's a, it's a skillset that you, I know that you keep with you, because I've had an opportunity to visit with you since you've been in this, you know, kind of interim role on issues that have popped up or, you know, that needed to be addressed in some fashion. And your ability to be open-minded, to engage the community, to recognize that there are, you know, three hundred and sixty degrees to any perspective, has, I think, you know, given me a great level of confidence that you will continue to serve well in this capacity, not as an interim, but actually as, as the director. So I'm thankful for you choosing Clovis so many years ago. I'm thankful for you continuing to choose Clovis every day in the, in your attitude and in the work that you do here. The, you know, we, we want to continue to be creative, and, you know, that you recognize that you can't sketch on the back of napkins is important, and only in the sense that I know you'll find somebody who has the ability to sketch on the back of napkins. So, anyway, congratulations on your appointment, and certainly we wholeheartedly, I wholeheartedly, and I think all of us wholeheartedly approve of the choice that Luke has made.
Thank you.
Jose?
Well, first of all, I concur with, with Luke and his choice, and it's good to hear that this was a, a search that went national and that, and that we here in Clovis have people that can compete at that level, and that you, when competing at that level, were, you know, rose to that level and beyond, and you're, you're the, the choice, because one, you understand what Clovis is, and you have the history here to, to understand who we are. You've worked with all of us here for, for a while, because we've been here a while, some of us, and so, so it's, it's gratifying to see that, that we here in Clovis can actually produce that kind of talent that, that is, is, could compete in, at the national scale, and, and, and I believe it. I think it's true. I think it's real, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Um, congratulations.
Thank you.
I've always had a sweet spot in my heart for you, so I'm really happy. I know we've had conversations over the years. I think early on, you wouldn't mind me saying, sort of wondering where your career would go, right? Like, was there a spot, and what would that look like? And so I just really value those conversations, and sometimes the best places are where you never expect to end up, so I think this is really a great fit for you. Um, I want to just, I, I agree with what both Bob and Jose said, but you know, your, your attention to detail and your ability to translate, I think, the complicated world of all of the planning and engineering into language that people understand is just as important as the back of a napkin. So I think that's going to be a really important skill for you. And I do think just it's, I'm really happy that you mentioned Harry. Harry was your biggest fan, for sure. All of our biggest fans, but he's looking down on you tonight. He's happy that you're there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bob?
Congratulations, Renee. I, I think that this relationship with the staff is a, a critical relationship in that we truly aren't the experts, and we really rely on your expertise, but more importantly, the patience in understanding that we don't understand, you know, the patience and knowing that we don't see the world like how you see it, and to be able to educate but also navigate together so that we can make Clovis beautiful. I think planning is, is a, as important as any other department, but I think planning makes people see Clovis for what it physically is, and so I think we are in good hands because you have the history and the expertise to lead us, and so congratulations, very happy for you, so.
Thank you.
We will, we'll do an official vote here in a minute, but...
I'm sweating up here. I want you to know.
I, I would, I would hope that not only Harry was your mentor, I think you had the dog's blessing too, when he used to bring his dog in all the time. Um, when we look at, at, at the council itself, we have two former planning commissioners. I was with the city for twenty-two years. Jose and Bob have served the city for a very long time, and we depend on our learned staff, especially people who've been here a very long time, to be able to give us not only factual information, but tell us what you think, so that we can make our, the good decisions. And we, as a city, are where we're at today because of the good decisions that were made twenty years ago. So we look forward to a long fruitful relationship, and tonight, I'm going to issue the very first City of Clovis Challenge Coin. I was hoping that none of you were going to try to beat me today. So before we do that, I will open this to the public. Does any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none. Anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, we got any letters?
No.
Okay, I will happily entertain a motion.
So Joe, I think you should make the motion, since you've served the longest with Harry.
Well, I agree that we concur with Luke's appointment of Renee for this position.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Um, item twenty-one, consider the design of a City of Clovis flag, and I will be doing the presentation. I, first, I want to start off by, by thanking staff, and especially Maria Spera. I, I'm sure at some point she was thinking about becoming a wedding planner, but after dealing with me, she doesn't want to have to deal with that anymore. So what we've done is we've broken the flag down into several different variations. We have the, the color is, is the same. The, there's a variation on the, the bucking bronco, and where we have the incorporated date inside the flag itself, or on the bottom. And then also, there is a variation with a white border. So we should probably look through these first and kind of absorb that, the differences, and then we can, then we can move to probably X-ing some out, and then coming to a conclusion, at least on maybe two, and then we, as a group, need to decide whether or not we want to make this decision, or if we want to put it to some type of social media litmus test. So item, number one is the, is the darker seal with nineteen twelve like a coin. Number two is the same version with the incorporated on the bottom. Number three is the variation of the bucking bronco, a little bit more color, colorization on it, and on the, on number four, it's the incorporated on the bottom, and the next one. Number five is the, is the colorized horse with nineteen twelve, number six without, number seven, again, with the nineteen twelve with, what's the difference? Oh, okay, all right. So this, at this angle, I have a little bit of difficulty here. Number eight, it's cream background with incorporated, with incorporated date underneath. Is there, there's another one, right? These are the variations with the white border, and we'll go to, and just continuing on with the white border. Marie did a very good job here, being able to show what the flag is going to look like on the fly. I, I don't know how she did it. It's, it was, it was magic, I, I could tell you that. This is, this is item number one. Next, with the, with the border. Item two, this is, has the incorporated date on the bottom. Item two B with the white border. Item three, this is the, uh, without, without a date, either on the, on the coin or on the, on the seal or underneath. Three B is the, the same, but with the white border. Four has the incorporated date. Is that the one with the, is that the cream background or the white background? Okay. And this is also the, the one with the white border. And number five is the white background with the coin style nineteen twelve, and item five B is the same with the white border. Six is the seal with the kind of cream background and with the white border, and seven, you know, the cream background with the nineteen twelve like a coin and white border. And item eight, which is the background with the incorporated February twenty-seventh, nineteen twelve, and with the background. So we have items one through eight. You go to the next one, next one, please? Nope, that's it. Okay. Let's go back to the beginning where we show all of them. Okay, so we have the variation with, and we can just kind of start needling it back a little bit. Do we want to have the colorized horse or the darker horse? I, I kind of like, me personally, I, I like the little bit of a different color. I think that the colorization on, on three B, I kind of like. Yes. Okay, so, so, Bob, do you have a, do you have a?
I, they, they all look very nice, so I, I am not...
Okay. So are, okay, then, then, so we, we decided on the colorized one, like number seven. Now, do we want to do the incorporated date like a coin, under the horse's nose, or at the bottom of the flag? I like the, I, I kind of like the coin look myself, just because it, I think it makes it look like, like it was a minted coin.
Well, I think that the only objection I would have to the full wording at the bottom is it, it is just a little bit too busy, and it would be difficult to see, particularly when it's flapping in the wind. And so it, it seems as though it communicates the same point by just having the date within the emblem itself. So I, I would just simply say I'm for whichever one has the gold star.
Right, and, and they all have a gold star.
Exactly.
They all have a gold star.
So I'm, I'm really flexible as to how you guys want to move forward, but just know that I'll be a, a yes vote on whatever motion I put forward.
Now, let me, going back up, now, number, uh, let's see. Go ahead, Jose. Right, so...
It loses symmetry for me.
Okay, so the, the, it sounds like we've, we've taken it to, what, basically what number five is?
I like number five or six, and then with the white, if we're going to give it to the people, five or, yeah, five or seven, and then white breech versions, and then pick from the four.
Okay, I, and there was also a variation with the white, the white border. Is there any, any thought on that?
Can we see with the full flag again, with the borders?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we get a better, yeah, those with...
Is, is that, is that, is that the number five version, though? No, I'm sorry. Okay, there's the white, there's four B, five. I, see, what I, what I like about this, it's red, white, and blue, with a little bit of, a little bit of color in the middle to kick the horse out. It looks like a coin, and, and if I heard... So, so between, well, I guess the question is, do we want to make this decision, or do we want to put it out to public and, and get some input? And, and I'm okay with that, too, and I think probably staff would probably be happy with that.
I think they're all, they're all pretty similar. Like, if one was yellow and orange and one was, I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But I think they're all sort of variations on a theme, so I, I vote that pick one, like that one.
Yes. Any other comments before, Mike wants to come up and tell us? So if, if I'm hearing everyone, number five, white background, good to go. Okay. I will, with the gold star. I will open this up to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on, any member of the public in chambers? Yes, sir?
Michael Cunningham here. I'm glad you picked my choice. Number five, I wasn't privy to seeing the challenge coin that's already been produced, and I would say, I'm a believer, and I'm sure Mr. Mayor will remember this, the KISS principle, keep it simple, sir. Keep it the same as the challenge coin. If that's what the challenge coin looks like, then great, let's put it on there. I like the coin emblem that keeps the incorporation date within the emblem, and I like that clean presentation there as opposed to a border, for what it's worth, but I, I would really heartily encourage you to keep it the same as your challenge coin. Don't have too der, you know, competing interests.
The, the only difference between this and the challenge coin is we hadn't made a decision on putting the date on the challenge coin, but I, I have to assume that they're going to go like hotcakes, so, because I've already had people ask me, and I figured during city manager comments, you'll tell us how to do that. But yeah, thank you, Mike.
Yes, and that's what I want to know, too, is where do you get them?
Any other member of the public in chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
No letters? Okay. We will close public comments and come back to council for action. Oh, well, we could, but... Well, before we go, before, before we go down that road, let me just get the vote on this first, before it kind of goes...
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say, for motion for item number five, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And, and thank you. This would, actually wouldn't be a bad mask, but we're not going there. A workshop, or the City of Clovis conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID- nineteen state of emergency, as declared by the federal government, State of California, County of Fresno, and City of Clovis, and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we move on to the workshop, so, just for clarification, the next batch of coins, do we want the date on the coin? We hadn't thought about that when we ordered this first batch. I didn't order a very big batch, so we probably will be ordering fairly quickly the second batch. Do we, is it their consensus that we put the date on the coin? Okay.
Yes. Well, they're going to, we're, we're going to do a new die, probably the, the other side of the coin will be new anyway, so... side of the coin will be new anyway, so we'll have to pay a die fee anyway, assuming that the next and we'll have to that will discuss that at a later time, but yes.
Okay, all right, uh okay, uh twenty twenty, the year that just won't end. Um so uh this is the graph I show every week with the number of uh new cases in Clovis by week. Um you will notice that the last reported date is November twenty first, the weekend, and even that wasn't a full week. Um the county, uh they haven't gotten us data on on this count in the last couple of weeks. Usually we get a weekly update from them. Uh the staff that was taking care of it was out for a couple of weeks and we haven't gotten the updates, but uh I I'm sure that number is continuing to rise. Um this is the uh graph of the Fresno cases, the Fresno County cases. Um a- as you can see, uh the 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 county is is on a very strong upward trend, uh haven't quite reached the peak that was hit during the summer um as far as cases, but we are pretty close um to, you know, once you smooth out the line for the 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 daily variances. Um the state is catastrophic. Um they uh the last date reported was yesterday and it's twenty almost twenty-five thousand new cases, um well above what was seen during the summer when we thought we had kind of crested the wave. So um that explains kind of why things are are changing in the state as far as the new orders. Uh again, this is the Clovis deaths or deaths from COVID with a Clovis address. Um they may be outside the city limits but still have a Clovis address. Uh and again, we don't have any data for the the last couple of weeks. Um so as soon as we do get caught up on data, we'll present that to council. Um this is the Fresno County deaths, um and uh it spikes up and down, but as you can see, uh there's been some spikes that have been up near the highest peak that we saw during the summer. Um this is the hospitalization, and this is really what's causing the impacts that we are seeing now um that led to the governor's orders. Uh the blue line is the uh confirmed and then the dotted is the confirmed plus suspected hospitalizations with COVID. Uh and the red line, the the solid, is the confirmed ICU COVID cases and the dotted is the confirmed plus suspected ICU cases. And as you can see, we are in the hospitalizations, we are higher than ever, and likewise with the ICU, um we are where we were at, you know, the very peak that we saw during the summer. Um so i- in in light of what's going on statewide and regionally, um you know, we had been in the different tiers. Uh on December third, the uh state issued a new order, um and it breaks it out by region. Uh Fresno is in the Fresno County is in the San Joaquin Valley region, um which goes from about San Joaquin County down to Kern County. It includes San Bernardino County, includes Calaveras and Topeka County in the foothills. Um and uh so we're in that region, so they they treat us as a region. And what they're what they're watching is uh how how many of your ICU beds in that region are available? Um so the order was issued on the third and it says if you reach the trigger point of only fifteen percent of your ICU beds being available, um we go into the shutdown that we're seeing now. Uh the San Joaquin Valley region hit that level on December sixth. Uh right now, the state is reporting uh in the San Joaquin Valley region, only six point three percent of the ICU beds are open and available. Um and the state is actually reporting that Fresno County has zero ICU bed availability. Uh so it is um i- i- it is a significant impact. It is over, uh you know, potentially challenging the capacity of the medical system um or the healthcare system. It it is also catastrophic to our small businesses. Uh again, um the the restaurants are closed for even outside dining. Uh they are open for takeout. Um uh small businesses, uh retailers limited to twenty percent in the store, um personal care, hairdressing, nails are closed. Uh so i- in many ways, for many of the businesses, we're right back to where we were in 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 April, and it it is a uh i- it's a very hard time and we're going into um for the retail side of things, they're prime prime time. And um I just don't know how survivable this is going to be for many of them because what I I expect we're going to see is with uh with the challenges of brick and that the brick and mortar are facing, you you're going to see people migrating to online shopping and once they do that, are they going to come back? Wh- when when this is all over and and everything's open, you know, next Christmas, if that happens, are people going to already be in the habit of I just, you know, order from my couch on my phone and do my Christmas shopping that way? So it it is a very challenging time for um for for retail and a very challenging time for our our restaurants. Um a lot of people out of work because of that. So um that's a a huge challenge to us. Um uh we are continuing to work as much as possible uh with our business community, trying to keep them just apprised because the rules are changing so fast that uh we get a lot of calls, oh, what does this mean? Because uh and 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 I got to uh kind of kind of give a shout out to Andy because Andy is on top of these and as soon as something changes, whether it's a Saturday or what, you know, he sends out the email to our full business mailing list, um just to kind of answer their questions, what this means. Um and uh but it is a trying time for them. Uh Andy and his staff are continuing to work with some housing assistance, um and we'll be coming back with some, you know, potentially coming back with some other programs down the line that we might want to look into or extend. Um but it is a it it's a very challenging time for our region right now and and statewide, it's a very challenging time um for businesses everywhere. Uh so um with that, that kind of concludes my my um just the the facts on the on the COVID impact. Uh previously, uh council had asked for kind of an update from our public safety is what they're seeing. Um so tonight, I've got both Chiefs Banaski and Fleming are in the audience and um I'll let them kind of turn it over to them and they'll kind of just give you kind of a a just a just a brief summary. I mean, they're it's not going to be a detailed uh statistics, but just a brief summary of what they're seeing, so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um just to kind of start back to where we were in March was the one thing we were fortunate in the fire service from H one N one in Ebola, we did ramp up, so we did have plenty of PPE. We actually wound up um giving some of that out to other local agencies for them than to reimburse us, and the state did actually give us twofold of what we gave out. So it was fortunate that we were on the forefront, had the right PPE, we had thirty-five hundred uh N ninety-five masks, we had a lot of good PPE in the beginning, and we've really expanded that now. But we've really kind of transitioned of how we do business is probably one of the first things that we did is is normally when you call nine-one-one, the fire engine shows up, all three people get off of the fire engine, go inside, they render care, and that's how we do business. Um once COVID came around, what we did was is one thing we did was is we actually purchased and got them shipped. We were one of the forefront of agencies who ordered them early, so we were able to get them, is what we call APR masks. So you see sometimes citizens wearing around with the pink uh filters on the side of them, but we can reuse those over and over and over, so it stops the burn rate that we had on our N ninety-fives and provides P one hundred quality air filtration for our firefighters. But now what happens is is we send one person in to the residents to assist and see what's going on, to limit our exposure, not bring everybody in, and then in turn, if we need more people, the rest of them come in. It gives them also the opportunity so we don't uh we reduce our burn rate from wearing gowns and all the gloves and stuff because they're, you know, still at times very hard to come by, so in turn, we would send one person in, they would evaluate it, and depending on the need of the call, the rest of them would get dressed up and away we'd go. The other thing we've done through questioning and stuff is is we've tried to bring more and more people outside. Now that's gotten cold, that's become a little bit more difficult in the evening hours, but try to get them and uh help them if possible outside in the fresh air environment than inside people's homes. Um we have had some outbreaks in some in some skilled nursing facilities and some other issues that were somewhat of a challenge, but those we've worked through. Um as we look at call volume for the year, March and April decreased, decreased significantly. And then from there, we uh we kind of by June brought back up, July and August was very busy, and we kind of leveled off to norms for uh September. And then October and especially November, right now, we are at record pace from where we were. And the fire calls basically did exactly the same. So just an idea of fire calls, uh we had a hundred and eighty-one for the month of uh July, the previous year was one oh one. Um another month, just to give you an idea, was uh one oh four, and we were one fifty-six for August. So significant fire uh activity out there, but that's just because most of the time we normally have a community that goes to work somewhere. So they leave their home, their kids go off to school, their uh mom and dad go to work, we their schoolteachers, hospitals, work for the county, wherever that is. And then um if you look at our population, our population during the day at home really decreases, and then about three o'clock, you then see the call volume pickup at people's homes that normally goes to about ten in the morning. And we also see that in the morning from five AM till about seven thirty in the morning where those calls are all at home. And then during the daytime, it's the schools, it's traffic accidents, we go to more businesses during the day. Well, what we've noticed now is is that's not, um and we can use Station Five is probably one of the best examples up there, a majority of the population it serves is residential. In the past, they would always uh run more calls after three PM till midnight, a little bit in the early, but the daytime volume would diminish. What you've seen now is is there's been no diminishment during the day. They're much more consistent for the entire uh main period, which we call from six AM till ten PM, that uh they respond to calls now compared to that transient population going to work or school and then coming back. Um so that's been a a bit of a difference that we see out there, but in terms of now all these people are at home, there's just more locations for them and unfortunately for fires to start. We don't see arson or anything along those lines. It's vehicle fires, it's a candle, it's um heaters, those types of things uh at the home that unfortunately is left unattended and starts the fire. But we definitely are on probably record pace other than when um future Ford and the lost commerce large commercial loss for what we would say will be fire losses, we report that for twenty twenty. On a good side, we're still actively doing fire prevention. We did slow there for March or April, try to reassess the situation. We did not do our biennials. We continued on the uh even through that period, we continued on all our state mandates because we have to report those. We should close twenty twenty at ninety-six to ninety-eight percent of all state mandated fire prevention inspections. And then we ride the ship, kind of got the assignments all reassigned and redone, and we will complete almost probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the uh biannual uh life safety inspections for businesses. We did do all the schools, and we've had to adapt. How do you do fire prevention or fire education for students virtually in some of those challenges? You know, it is a little bit difficult because you can't take the fire engine out to the kindergarten class or the first grade class because they're not there, so how do we do something virtually to educate them? Um those are a lot of the changes, but I will tell you what I've seen. So and I think one of the questions was it was how is our personnel doing? I wanted to make sure that I reported back to you exactly, so I've spent the last seven days through the weekend, I've met with every single crew, every person that's been on duty. Um you can tell they're a little fatigued, just like I believe you are, every citizen is out there from what we hear from public comments, they're a little fatigued of COVID, but overall, they're doing good. We've only had three or four COVID positive um employees in the fire department, and if we do contract tracing, all likelihood is is that they receive that somewhere outside the fire department. We provide them PPE with the new caloche rules and some of the things that we've had to put in place. The fire station isn't the best place now that you're there for forty-eight hours to wear your mask because you're in uh contact with other employees. You see them riding the fire engine, they have their mask. I mean, it's just been this constant evolution of how we protect our employees. We were early on with the uh Genon machines, the spray, the aerosol to clean the fire stations and and those actually worked really good for us inside the cab where we're most likely to come from patients, get back in the cab and contaminate it, so we use it inside the fire apparatus on um every day or every other day to um really deep clean it, so that's worked well and it doesn't affect our electronics. Um but what I can tell you is is what you see up there, we're seeing it on the streets right now, is is that American ambulances has the exclusive operating zone for Fresno County. They have been given an exemption because of the uh COVID and the pandemic, no fault of their own. They are hung up at the hospital a long time, so I believe they were somewhere around two hours and forty-five minutes with patients waiting to find a bed for them to put them in the hospital. So what you're seeing now is is critical patients that are on ventilators or that would normally get moved upstairs, free up ICU beds, they're downstairs for twenty-four, twenty-six hours or so, waiting for a bed to get uh available to move them up onto the floor. So that's what we're seeing right now. I just looked right before this meeting because we heard the sirens um outside and uh you know, was that patient going to St. Agnes and the fire crew went with them? So I had four out of the five of my fire apparatus committed to calls, four of those were uh all medical aid. So definitely seeing the increase of medical aid calls, and then in turn, we're out there a little bit longer because the poor ambulances is still staffing more units, doing the best they can to hold the system together, but they're committed, sitting there for two, two and a half hours, waiting for a bed for that patient, so in turn, that unit's not available. So lucky for us that we're there to uh, you know, help provide medical care till they get there, but American ambulance has done a fantastic job, the hospital system's doing a fantastic job, but we definitely are um started to see more and more positive patients, I would say, even of friends of my own staff and those people, just in the last week, it's definitely my personal opinion, well, and I would say some data says that it's changed just in the last week. But we've done everything we can to provide a safe workforce. We have seen, like I said, call volume go down, call volume come up for summer, which basically correlates to that first peak, and now we've seen it coming back around again for the second peak. And then the summer months, which we normally see our most fire activity in the summer months, we were at record pace for July and August for our fire activities. I want to make sure I got council member one two his questions, I know this was the item that he wanted to have addressed.
Chief, um n- none of our staff got COVID while out on the call from residents, then? So we we've been protecting our staff pretty effectively. Is that pretty accurate?
Through contract tracing, yes, the best we can determine is is that they probably got it somewhere else.
Okay.
Um that that's in all likelihood. Now, COVID is a reasonable presumption now from the state, so they are entitled to workers' compensation for that, but it's also, you know, no, every time they've gone on a call, they've worn proper PPE, so the assumption is is that they haven't had any failures, so in turn, they have not got it from a call. Now, could they have got it from not washing her hands or something like that? Absolutely, but most of them or several of them, contract tracing has put it back to a family member or another person that got it before they did.
And with the increase in the number of calls, ha- has that affected response times? You know, you were saying it was one oh one to one eighty-one now, one oh four.
A little bit. Response times definitely this year will be longer than they were last year, but there's a lot of other competing factors that go with that is is if you look at Station Four, Station Four now is running so much into what will become Station Six area, that's just a long time there, you know, longer time there, longer time on scene, longer time comes back. Probably our, you know, once Station Six comes online in the beginning of twenty-two, that will really improve the system of the uh Station Four, Station Five's response times. Um but we are spending normally, if we're committed about twenty-two minutes for a call, uh we are seeing a little bit longer commitment times.
And the increase has been proportional at all the stations? Or is there one area much more so, maybe areas where there are the senior care homes or is it just pretty proportional in the increase of of calls?
Well, how and part of some of the changes, and these were kind of in effect before COVID, is is that if you're at um, let's use the Kaiser facility, Peachwood Medical, skilled nursing facilities, places that have a nurse or higher level of care, we only go there for every call that you call nine-one-one on, even if it's for a fire call, they'll ask you questions, and if it's a medical aid call, they'll ask you questions. If you hit a dig in a hole and you hit a gas line, they're going to ask you questions. It's basically what we call pro QA for pro question and answer dispatching. And we and based on how you answer those questions, the call gets prioritized one through three. We only go to those facilities for a priority one call. So that's basically chest pain, stroke, the high acuity calls that in all likelihood require additional hands or help, and we don't go to those compared to your residents will go to priority one, priority twos, and some priority threes, not even all of the priority threes. So if you complain of uh mild leg pain, we're not going to tie up a fire engine to go do that. And part of that is is we just don't have the resources to go to every one of those calls, commit that timeframe. I'd need three or four more fire engines, and that's just not cost effective for the taxpayer.
And how are we moving? And how are we moving forward with regards to supplies, PPE supplies and, and all that?
Oh, we are more than set for PPE supplies. So, uh, we are good and we took some, law enforcement got a whole bunch of it too, that were there for PPE supplies. And really what we've really learned, and, and we had to learn that early on, so, but we continue that, is what we call our burn rate. We had to document it on every single call. We had to put it down, partly because we didn't know what reimbursement was going to come from FEMA, what reimbursement was going to come from the state. So we really figured out how to reduce the burn rate. And having, uh, reusable APRs that can be, uh, rinsed in a seventy percent alcohol solution, dried, that, that has helped burn the rate per mask. We've used reusable masks in the fire stations and ways to clean them. And then by only sending one person in that has to then evaluate whether or not the rest of the crew has to get gowns and gloves and the rest of it. Um, really the problem, the only one that's out there that's been kind of limited supply that's, um, still on the forefront of not, I mean, we're very fortunate, we still have plenty, so don't get me wrong on this conversation, but the hardest supply out there right now is gloves, medical latex gloves is actually what's, uh, issues with that, coming from, both of them are all made in Malaysia. They had issues, they had COVID there, so they're almost all sole sourced out of Malaysia. So, uh, that was the hardest thing that people are getting, but lucky again for us, we were on the forefront and we called every Monday when they reopened up orders and we made sure we put our order in. So we actually have a decent supply. We could probably go the next four or five months without having to order gloves. And we're looking at some other things of rapid, uh, COVID testing and some other things, but we don't have all the approvals for that, to do that for exposures and, um, public safety staff. So we are trying to work on a few other things out there to make sure we're again ha- ahead of the curve than everybody else. I think we got a pretty good track record of that here.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the chief? Wes?
Chief, what's the forecast for, uh, first responders and the vaccine that you've heard?
Well, I can tell you where we started two weeks ago with, we were going to get a hundred thousand vaccines, they were going to be distributed primarily first to the hospitals and then to the basement at county health. And then the end of last week, we went from a hundred thousand, and that was supposed to do fifty thousand people because we were going to do, you know, it takes two dosages. So that was going to be basically, majority of the hospitals, some skilled nursing facility staff, and then we go from there. Um, as you've read or heard, we are anticipated to receive, not this week, but the beginning of next week, seventy-eight hundred. So that's a far cry from where we stand on the, uh, level. The entire state's only getting three hundred and seventy-two or three hundred and seventy-six thousand vaccines. Um, so the governor or the Health and Human Services staff said to make sure we administer all seventy-eight hundred of them, and they assured the county that, uh, because originally we were doing fifty, so we had the second dose on hand, that within three weeks when they need the second dose, the other seventy-eight hundred would be here. I'm guessing now that, uh, you know, that the hierarchy right now that's been established is, is it is staff in all of the hospitals to, uh, from the phlebotomist to the pharmacist to the person who cleans the room to the doctor to the nurse. That's the first priority. The second priority is skilled nursing facilities, since that's where we see the breakout with their staff. And then the third will be paramedics and EMT. At seventy-eight hundred, I'm guessing we're probably down the list of late January, early February. And then you got to look at the trade-off after speaking with my crews. I think this is probably a very valid number, but they, uh, surveyed nurses and people in LA, and I think the number was sixty-one or sixty-three percent said they would get the vaccine. They just did, uh, FDNY in New York and, uh, along with a portion of the PD, and they were a hair above fifty, said they would wait. So that's the other part that you look out there is, is I think that you're going to see people that are going to wait, even at the hospital setting, even in the EMS setting, wait and see how it goes from there.
Because of the quantity, the hospitals are actually prioritizing inside hospitals, so it's high-risk employees inside hospitals. So it'll take even a little bit longer to get through a larger swath of hospitals, so just, it might be February.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's my guess, is at the current rate, we're going absolutely. I mean, it's, for what I heard, it's going to start at risk in the ER and on the, and in the ICU and then go from there. But I can't remember the number, but I wanted to say that number was upward of what they assumed sixty-five or sixty-eight thousand people. But then put that and transpire and, you know, put that out to the aspect of, is there's a million people in Fresno County? So you're going to need two million dosages, and how do you get two million dosages out there effectively? And then the other problem of the entire situation is, is hospitals are easy to do it, even were easy to do it because paramedics are authorized to give the injection, is so really our cost is, uh, because it's mixed with normal saline, so you need to have a normal saline vial that we have to purchase or, you know, the county will, however it's going to work, and then a syringe. When you go out to the large group, is, is who, there's no funding mechanism currently for all the staff, tents, wherever we're going to set all these things up to inoculate people right now, that's one of the issues that are out there, is, is the federal government has graciously paid for the vaccine, but that's as far as their cost and reimbursement has gone. So that's the other aspect of, is, is, you know, in the hospital setting, they have people who can do that, that are on staff pay, but it's, it grows into a larger distribution. It's where is that money going to come from? I'm just glad it's not my responsibility.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Fleming?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. Um, before I get started, I just want to echo, and I think the confirmation of Renee tonight was, is a great choice. Renee's been a great, uh, great member, working relationship with the police department, and it's especially important in future planning for environmental design and, and preventing future crimes from occurring. A lot of our relationship is important in that. So great choice and look forward to working with Renee. Um, so as far as COVID and the impacts on the police department, I won't rehash what, what, uh, Chief Benanski said, but a lot of it from the beginning was, the fire department is really ahead of the curve in us catching up with PPE and that kind of thing. We, that's something we're not traditionally prepared for, so they helped out a ton at the beginning. Um, as time has gone on, we've, uh, worked with Cal OES and I think recently we came in and we, we took over possession of fifty thousand N95 masks, sixty-one thousand surgical masks, a thousand disposable gowns, and then about forty thousand wipes. So we're, we're in a good position now, and that's shared amongst all departments within the, within the city and with the fire department. Um, so just from the beginning, we really tried to protect all of our employees, especially kind of a critical function of ours is our dispatch center. And at the beginning, we, we separated those into two different locations, a backup center and, and our, our main center. And that was a tremendous strain on those employees and has been, and probably throughout this, this, uh, pandemic. Um, and still at this point now, the, the, that team is back together, but having to function with face mask on, face shields and, and do their job is, is extremely difficult. Um, but getting them back together where they work best as a team is, is really important, and that happened here in the last month. Um, some other things that have hurt us as a department is, we're big on community engagement, and we have not been able to do that at all. Um, ride-along programs, um, all of our volunteer positions, chaplains, um, a lot of our animal services positions have been cut out and have not come back to this point. So, um, and that's a lot about what we do is engage in the community in that full-service department, and it's really hampered our, our relationship with the community. So we've been trying to be creative and engage in other aspects. Uh, we did a workshop a few months ago with some of our police sergeants, and it came up with other ideas like, uh, walking beat down at Farmer's Market, just to say hi, we're still here in the community and, and, and we want to engage, uh, walking beats at apartment complexes through, through other areas that we traditionally don't do to try to engage the community. So those are the things that we've been working on. Um, overall impact as far as, uh, crime, um, the first few months, everybody went inside, um, and our calls for service really went down. We told our officers, do not respond to calls. And so for those two months, we've seen a dramatic decrease in calls for service. Um, since that time, um, and a, a, a lot of other aspects of some policies, I think with the zero bail and, and releasing of prisoners have dramatically increased calls for service and, and crime in our city. And really, in particular, we typically only deal, a majority of our crime is property-related and, and nonviolent crime. And as of recent, I think, um, that's changed a little bit. Just as of this weekend, um, we had five calls where we, we took five firearms off of, uh, five individuals just in the weekend, which is not typical for the city of Clovis. And the three of those locations where firearms were, were taken off of people were at hotels, which we've seen a dramatic increase in, in calls for service. Um, I, I could go through a list of crimes, there's, there's a, a ton that have increased. Overall though, you'll see that ten percent of our cases have decreased, their actual case reports we take have gone down by ten percent. But a ton of calls, um, or, um, crime types have gone up. Um, just, uh, like runaways, twenty-seven percent, theft from motor vehicles, twenty-two percent increase. Uh, um, vandalism's up eleven percent, weapons laws violations up twelve percent. Um, so there, there's a ton on the increase. And I think that why you see that ten percent drop is from those first two months where we, we didn't do any proactive policing is kind of where that reduction happened. And right now we're on pace to, um, uh, vehicle burglaries, GTAs, and all those things are going to be above where they were last year at the same time. Um, just as an example, our shots fired calls are up forty percent, our, um, domestic violence calls are up ten percent. Um, some, for some reason, for the last twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we had zero fatality, uh, traffic collisions. This year we've had six with seven deaths. Um, so I, I don't know if I can link that to COVID, but it's, it's just outside the norm for, for our typical here in the city of Clovis. Um, I think that's, that's it, and I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Fox, a- any numbers for child abuse at all, those calls? Do you have that?
Um, what I have listed from what I printed out today from our crime analysis, family offenses is up forty-eight percent. And I don't have that directly related, related to child abuse per se, but, um, also what I'm not able to pull is mental health calls and homelessness, because a lot of those are just classified, um, check the welfare, suspicious person, some are mental health, some are just, they, they come from different areas, so it's hard to really pinpoint, um, those specifically on, on a rise. But I think if you drive around the city of Clovis right now, you can definitely see an increase in, in our transient population. Um, we're well aware of that. It's, it's not a crime to be homeless, but, um, we are out, uh, reaching out to them, trying to, uh, get them services they need and the help they need. Um, so we are definitely aware of that and working on that.
Chief, do, do you think that the increases are because we have been more open than Fresno? So people are coming here to shop, people are coming here to go to the parks? Has that, or do, is there correlation in your opinion or no? It's, it's other things?
Um, as, as far as related to the hotels, uh, um, we've seen a, an increase, um, I mean, that might be statewide, but there's a lot of, uh, EDD fraud occurring and a lot of people using that to stay at, in our hotels and commit crimes. Um, we've done some sting operations related to, um, human trafficking, and, um, they've been overly successful, not, not that I'm excited about that, but, uh, we've had to shut them down early because they're too successful. Um, so there's definitely crime occurring, um, within the city, and I'm not sure if it's directly related to, say, COVID, but because of some of the policies put in place by the state and some of the funding mechanisms have given people opportunities to come to our city, city and commit crime.
Thank you. Wes?
Chief, do you think that the, um, do we still have our mental health clinician with, from DVH?
We do.
Do you think there's going to be an impact or what do you think the impact will be? Should the city of Fresno move to respond to fewer mental health calls and rely on those clinicians? Do you see an impact on our clinician potentially? Would we lose that position or do you have any sense of what might occur from that?
I, I hope not because, um, she's extremely valuable. We, we rely on her a, a ton. Um, we have two positions, one's currently vacant, it's been, been that way for a while, but, um, it's a huge resource for us, so I hope that does not occur. Um, I hope we can fill the second position because I think it's, it's truly needed. Um, I think, uh, we're, we're lacking in resources for that at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? One more question, uh, Mayor. Chief, has, how has the reaction from the public to our law enforcement been, and what I mean is, have they been appreciative of how we have handled it or have they been more angry because they are expecting your officers to enforce more?
So one of our three goals is citizens satisfaction. We want to have a ninety percent or higher satisfaction rate from our citizens. And, um, we were having a, a tough time judging how to get that before we, we would mail out mailers to people. And, um, this is historically what we've done, and mail out a hundred and get four back. Are we truly getting a good gauge on what our citizens think of us? So recently in the last year, we, we went to a company called Spider Tech. So when you call the police department, you'll receive a text message saying that we got your call, and, and then when an officer clears that call, you'll also get a text message with the case number, that officer's name, and a link to complete a survey. So now we're, we're getting six to seven hundred surveys a month back from our citizens, so it's truly given us a good gauge on where we're at. And we're upwards of ninety-five percent satisfaction throughout this, this COVID epidemic and, uh, or pandemic, I'm sorry. Um, so I, I think the public is appreciative of us. That's, I think, one of our, um, the best part about doing this job is our, our public is very supportive of law enforcement and, and the job we do. And, um, but I will tell you, in those surveys, we ask, wha- what are you most concerned about? What are the, the concerns for our community? And the majority of that right now is, is the transient population coming into town. A lot of people recognize that and are concerned about that, along with the, the growth in our community.
Chief, I, I have a question regarding the, uh, our fatal TAs. Are these nighttime, daytime? I, I had a conversation with the CHP chief who told me that they're arresting considerably more people during the day for DUI. Uh, is there any DUI connection with these fatalities?
Um, I'd say for sure two of them, yes. I'm just thinking off of memory right now. Three were motorcycle related. Um, actually I'd have to adjust the number based on some information I received. I think we're at seven fatalities, eight deaths, so, um, one of them being a bicycle. Um, the maj- majority of them, there is a few in the daytime, but a majority of them are at night. Um, majority of them are motorcycles for some reason. Um, and I think three are vehicle related, but only a couple of them are DUI that, that, um, based on the, my, my recollection.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on the workshop? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clark, I'm assuming we see, received no documentation on this?
No.
Okay. Um, I, I would like to address this. Um, I, I saw today that the, the city council in Fresno is considering taking enforcement action on people who have more than fifteen people in their house, um, which obviously is, if they can, they're the city of, they're their own city, they can do what they want. Um, I, in my opinion is that we should not participate in any enforcement like that until we've had an emergency meeting, because obviously we have one meeting left. Um, and if we consider doing something like that, we have an emergency meeting so that members of the public can tell us what their opinion of any potential action would be. Are, are we pretty much in agreement on that?
Are they asking us to join with them?
No, they, I, they're, nobody is, I don't know, I don't know that they have five votes, um, but I have to assume that, and I did see, uh, uh, interview with the interim chief in Fresno where he said that they won't be doing it, they won't be enforcing. I, I just, I, I don't want our public to get panicky or concerned that we're going to, we're going to jump in and do something draconian. So I guess probably just looking at my peers, if in the event that we... if, in the event that we, we are asked by another authority to do something, we need to have an emergency meeting so we can have a public discussion about it.
Absolutely. There is no movement in any direction like that amongst staff. And we certainly wouldn't do that without open discussion and council direction.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Vaughn?
Luke, I want to thank you for getting Chief Blen, Chief Benaski to give us the update on sort of the responses and what's been going on. And I know this is a difficult time, because you are sort of at the forefront of responses with regards to your men and women with regards to COVID calls. And I think, at least on my end, the reaction from the public that has commented or reached out to me has been very, very positive of how our staff has handled the businesses and if our law enforcement and fire have responded to any potential COVID calls. And so I just wanted to commend our staff for doing an excellent job and for keeping the city as safe as possible, considering, you know, the circumstances we're in. So thank you for that.
Lynn?
Just one thought from my colleagues up here, and I don't, I don't know what it might be, but is there a message, a community message in chat? I might ask you to think about this, and I don't know. But I feel like the, there could be an opportunity as a council. We've got good feedback on the mask thing. Is there a message of, I don't know, uplifting, or affirmation, or hope, or, I don't know, some unified message? You know, you said we should really focus on shopping local. You know, that'll probably be the entire theme for 2021, just shop something. But I just, I just, I wonder if there's a message, because there's really not any, I don't consider any great leadership emanating from many places. And so while the gentleman said we were leaders, I might not agree with exactly what he was talking about. But I do think there's something to be said for that. So I just don't know if there's a message that would be helpful on social media this time of year about COVID-19 or about, I don't even know what it's about, but I was thinking about that for the five of us, potentially.
Sure. So we kicked off a new campaign today online, which is supporting restaurants and businesses locally during the holiday season. We know this is a tough time period, and it just got tougher. So that launched this afternoon, and you'll see some regular messaging. So any council members that would like to be a part of that, as far as sharing some video messages, I think that would be completely appropriate. We also have the COVID testing, which is taking place.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And we've had the opportunity to have the mayor say a few words on some video posts. And I know that we're doing it in some Spanish and Mong, which will be hitting our social media soon. We've, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag for anyone who may be sharing this information, but we'll be doing these testing sites through January now. So there'll be ample opportunity if all council members would like to be a part of this outreach. And it was very successful. We had a ton of people out there, and we know people saw it on social media.
I think that, I mean, I just think that if you could think of anything else, I mean, we could be part of what you have. Is there something the five of us could do in the same visual image? I just, I worry that people are looking for something to hold on to. And so I just thought maybe there's something, we said wear a mask, we got an editorial about what great leaders we were. So maybe there's something we could say collectively now about, I don't know, go downtown, eat something.
A brainstorm will work on that.
Something, but if there is something, or we can participate in what you already have, which is great. But I was just thinking there might be an opportunity to weigh in as a collective here at this moment. Thanks, think about it.
Luke, I got a question regards to shopping online. If I make a purchase through Amazon, what percentage of the sales tax do the city of Clovis get?
So the, that, that sales tax goes into the county pool, unless it's same-day delivery, then that goes, I think, to the Fresno site. But most of it goes into the county pool, which is then distributed in proportion to the brick and mortar sales tax. So they look at the brick and mortar, the locally collected sales tax. And if Clovis gets 11% of that, then Clovis gets 11% of the online. We've always felt that, that's a huge battle in the state, is, you know, do you, where do you book that sales tax? We have always surmised that Clovis would be much better off with the sales tax booked at the point of delivery, rather than the point of origin or even by the proportion that they currently use. But that's a battle that the cities and the state can't agree on, because there's some that make a lot of money off of having the distribution centers, and they don't want to give that up. So that was a battle before COVID. It's kind of, it has kind of fallen by the wayside over the last nine months, because everybody's so busy, all the cities are so busy dealing with COVID and such. But I suspect that we're going to see that, once we get through this, and we will get through it eventually, we will see that become a bigger issue, because, you know, one of the best analyses I've seen has said that this pandemic, what it has really done is fast-forwarded our economy 10 years. That all these changes were happening, the move to online shopping, the move to working, you know, remotely, the move to food delivery, rather than going to the restaurant yourself, and that this has just fast-forwarded it 10 years. So when we come out of this, we're going to be, the economy is never going to be the same as it was before we went into it. And I think this will be a very big point of discussion as to what do we do with the sales tax to kind of keep cities and counties functioning.
My wife recently did an online purchase from Target, went and picked it up. Was, she goes, this was great. Do we get a higher percentage of people purchase from a Target or Walmart and pick it up here in town? And if we do, is there a way that we can encourage people to do that? You know, it does count as a local purchase, and we get more money, does that?
So in that situation, it would count as a local purchase and be booked just as a purchase of that Target. So we can't, but when we get the Target numbers, we can't differentiate between how many were browsing the aisles and pick something up versus how many ordered ahead of time. But yeah, we are reaching out with shop local. You know, really, though, much of our focus has been on the smaller businesses. Not that we don't care for the Targets or the Coscos or the Lowe's, but, you know, the businesses most at risk now are our small, local businesses. And, you know, that's kind of why we're talking about some of these campaigns with, you know, hey, gift certificates from favorite restaurant makes a great Christmas gift, you know? Do all your shopping and, you know, go get gift certificates. Because, you know, like I said, we're going to come out of here, out of this issue different than we went in. When things get back to normal, the last thing we want is those places not to be there anymore. So we've really been concentrating more on the small, but we can also throw in some stuff on the medium.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not shilling for big-box retailers. They have done considerably better than small businesses have. So, I mean, if we can, if we can encourage people to shop local with small businesses on the internet, go down and pick it up, walk in, walk out, you know, they, we get, they survive. We get a better cut of the sales tax on it, so it's a win-win.
Now they bring it to your car.
Yes, bring it to your car, put it in your trunk, any number.
Just for council, you know, kind of a preview of next week, we'll be presenting the CAFR and the financial report. But Jay will also be giving you, we have our, we have some sales tax numbers in, so he'll be kind of giving you a comparison as to, you know, where we started back in March. Because if council, remember, we presented the five-year forecast, which is our five-year look ahead in the budget. And like, two weeks later is when this all hit. So we came back in May with a budget that was significantly different than we thought it was going to be in March. We're starting to get some numbers in, so we're going to be giving council a comparison as to, okay, where did we come in compared to not only our budget that we adopted in June, but to our projection before this all hit? So we'll be coming back with some reports on that as well.
Luke, and that segues well into city manager.
I didn't know, and today, there was an article in the paper about, I don't do DoorDash or those sorts of things, but a restaurant owner was saying, when you do that, that like DoorDash takes a third of the rest. I don't know that. But I mean, and I guess people are making money doing DoorDash, so I don't want to not have people make money doing DoorDash. But I also didn't know that. So they're losing a fairly good size, a good chunk of their ticket sales. So I mean, you know, again, not to take away, it's sort of like robbing Peter of Paul, not to do that. But I just, I did not realize that. So it's a little bit of sort of what you talked about, too. If you can just order from the restaurant, go get it, tip there, and not to tip, yeah, again, I get, I get it. But I just did not know that. Do you know that? What do you know? Do you know that? Isn't that about DoorDash?
I just know that they're coming out with their IPO soon, so you might want to buy some stock.
Spoken like a true former stockbroker. Note to self, anyway, there's probably a few of those tips like that that, I don't know, to think about.
Vaughn? Luke, I was thinking about how there were a lot of ideas from Andy and from planning. Maybe this is a good time to relook about parking, you know? Is it too much, is it too little? How do we plan for emergencies? And others codify some of that stuff. And then how we plan sidewalks and make it for the future? Because it seemed like it's been a hit, you know, some of the outdoor dining. And make it where it is, you know, how do we do that with trails, all that kind of stuff? Where I think this is a good opportunity for us to really get together our staff and just plan and go, okay. You know, we've seen some of this stuff, what works, what doesn't work, what can we do? What can we put in an emergency section where if there is something, where now it becomes something we use all the time? I just think you guys have been so creative and have been so at the forefront, even before all other cities did anything, you know, we were doing things.
It has been a team effort, you know, Andy on the business development side, Renee and her staff on the, on the planning side, police and fire on the public safety side. And again, I see us moving in that direction. We had started, you know, when we first started that, taking it to the streets with the parklets in Old Town, that was kind of the concept to get people thinking about maybe outdoor dining, outdoor spaces. Again, we fast-forwarded 10 years with this pandemic. We will probably be starting our next general plan update in the next year or so. So we're looking at both short-term, but we're also going to be incorporating long-term issues here.
Thank you. The segue is well into city manager's comments. Do you have anything, Luke? No, I've got nothing else, thank you. Okay, council comments, Bob?
John? Okay, I don't know if you guys can really see that very well, but that is a trail, because I, you know that I like trails. But from the Dry Creek Trailhead over there at Sunnyside and Shepherd, if you were to walk a little bit south from there on that Dry Creek, this was just an organic effort that was put together by, I know of one couple, George and Kimmy, who live in that area. And they've just circled some Christmas lights around the trees that parallel on both sides the trail. So you can probably see maybe that pathway that goes between those trees. And it's just a really pleasant walk to take. And it's not, you know, on any major arterial. I mean, that's just a residential street that's off to the left there. But those who enjoy taking a walk at night on our trails get a beautiful little surprise of Christmas joy when they come upon that particular section. So I want to just let you guys know that, you know, the community, obviously, is still alive and well, engaging in ways that we had not really thought of, but organically. And I think that it just goes to show, you know, what I think is one of the unique things about our community. So I wanted to show that to you. So those are battery-powered? Yeah, so they have to replace the batteries pretty regularly. It's not a homeowners association, it's not done with the city of Clovis, it's just these people who have decided that they want to bring a little Christmas joy to folks. Yeah.
Impressive, thank you, Bob. Lynn?
I don't have anything. I guess just to follow up on that comment, though, Vaughn's comment about looking ahead. We've talked over the years, I mean, this is how we started this outdoor dining conversation, but that parking lot, you know, in the, I don't know the number, I've heard the letter, but, you know, in parking lot one, I knew that, I was going to say that, that one. I mean, maybe there's a way to do some kind of a capital improvement project to make that a plaza or an outdoor dining area permanently. Because part of the problem is, I know they looked at, you know, you can't, the trash enclosure, and that seems complicated. But I think for the, some of those restaurants back there, renting those tents was not easy and not free. So that was a super expensive investment. So I mean, that would be kind of an interesting advancement on 10 years from now, maybe we would all do that anyway. But if the city want, if we could find a way, a grant, a some way to make that a plaza area for always outdoor dining, because that might attract more restaurants around that little corner over time. Sorry, just a thought, just to finish up that. Aside from that, the message for Chad, so maybe you could think about that, and that's all I had.
Vaughn? Yeah, I wanted to, I know we have a couple more of the testing coming up, but I went out there that morning. And our Public Works staff did such a great job, along with United Health Centers and you guys coordinating it, where, you know, it came in, it split into three, and they all went out pretty quickly. There was already a line early on. I heard from them, it was over 600 people came. And I think it's just such a great resource for our community to know that they can go there, and it's pretty quick and easy getting out. And I appreciate the fact that we did it nine to three. And the fairgrounds did it for a whole weekend, and they didn't even match those numbers. And so we had even bigger numbers than them. And so looking forward to, you know, the next two weeks and then January for us continuing to do that. So great job on that. On the coin, how do we order, how do we get our little stash? How does that work, Luke? Can you let us know how much it is and if we want to order higher quantities?
Sure, I can, I'll send council an email with what we've got. We bought, the first batch, I think we got 200 or 300 of them. The cost was about $7 apiece. And it's at council's discretion, you know, my thought is that if you're giving it out as an official action, then that's on the city. If you're giving it out, you know, as a private thing, then council, or anybody could pay for them, and we'll get something out where, you know, we sell the T-shirts, and we'll put these in the display case and go from there.
Thank you. And lastly, I've received a call from the people doing Santa's Village, and they wanted to, and I don't know, I'm bringing it up here because I don't know how, what gets approval with. They wanted to potentially use our nice trolley, the green, red one. And so I said I would, I didn't know, because I got a call over the weekend, if they needed three of us to approve before someone can use city stuff, or that just goes straight directly to you?
Well, if, if council wants to gift that, that would take a council action. But the trolley is just available for rental.
Okay, just go straight with it.
Just call transit, and you can rent the trolley.
Okay, and if they wanted it as a gift, then it would come back to us?
Yes.
To see if we would waive it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would.
But good to know the process.
Yeah, but generally, we generally try to steer them more toward the rental, because then we don't, we're not in the, in the business of deciding, you know, who gets it and who doesn't. Because as soon as you open up to one, then you open up to everybody. Whereas we have the rental rates, it's a, anybody can rent it. I rented it for my son's wedding. Other people rent it for weddings all the time, so just call transit and we can set it up. Yes. Yeah, they gave me some, yeah.
Jose?
Maybe if I put a mic, it works better. This Thursday, Haptap for Humanity will break ground at the old Flores Homestead, at 1403 Fourth Street and 1421 Fourth Street, right? 1403 was the actual Flores Homestead, 1421 was another property my parents owned. So I'll be there, unless I have an emergency, I'll be there. It's Thursday, right? And the United Health Centers will also be at the Recreation Center that same day, from what, nine to three, doing the vaccination. And I failed to mention last time that there's an opportunity for at-large director at the North Kings Groundwater Sustainability Authority that I should have brought last time. And we're given the opportunity to come back to our councils to get some guidance as to who to nominate for that position. There's several agencies that participate in that GSA. And there's a couple that have not participated on the governance side of it. And that's, and here, close to us, Garfield and International Water Districts have not. The other entity- The other entities that have are like Bachman and Biola Community Center Service District, is that it? Biola? And I.
Yeah, Biola's a community service district, Pinedale's a water district, they haven't been on there.
But Pinedale, I, I don't think Pinedale contributes, do they?
I apologize.
The contributors, of the contributors, uh, I know that, uh, International Water District and, and Garfield Water Districts have not. So, uh, the next meeting is, uh, it's Thursday after our next meeting. So I think there's time, if Scott can do me a favor and, and, uh, reach out to those water districts if there's someone they'd like to, us to nominate.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm trying to remember back to when the GSA was formed. And I believe there was kind of a brokered deal between FID and International.
They would be their reps?
Yeah.
So, so International would never have a.
Well, well, if International got one, FID would have two. They, they, FID would have their rep and then if, they would also put someone on there to, to represent International as well.
So they can never be at-large? So I don't know the details of that, can you have Scott?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have Scott, um, kind of prepare a briefing and get it out.
And can we have it on Monday, that way we, uh, report, so we can have it on Monday? So we can make, so they can give me some direction as to who to nominate for our, it's a tentative meeting because if we don't have enough on our, our agenda, it might be canceled. Has your, are you still on, on the?
I, I have not, I haven't been involved in it recently. So I'll get, I'll get hold of Scott and find out and, and we'll get something to counsel.
Because if his is canceled, ours will be canceled as well. So it might, it's very tentative, that's what I heard, as, as if we're going to even have a, a December meeting. So we might have more time to decide who to nominate. It's in that large position. And that's all I have.
Late last week, I was at a virtual promotion ceremony. Uh, you probably have met Colonel David Hall at some functions at the Veterans Memorial District. Colonel Hall was, is the commanding officer of the Army Reserve Unit by the airport. I have his picture here, you'll look at him and go, yes, I remember talking to him, a very personable, very nice man. Uh, was just promoted to one-star general. And it was, uh, I've never seen a flag ceremony before and it was, uh, it was something to say. Uh, it was very impressive, I wish I could have been there physically. But I'll be, uh, he'll be the second recipient of a challenge coin from the City of Clovis. That's all I have. We, we have closed section, are we going to be reporting out anything?
Uh, no, we won't be reporting out anything, but now's an opportunity for anybody in, in the public that wants to comment on anything on the closed session.
Any member of the public in council chambers wish to speak to anything that's listed on the closed section? Seeing no one in public, uh, do we have anybody online?
No.
And we receive any, any written material?
No.
Okay, we are in adjournment, thank you very much. That's Colonel Hall. Jose? That's Colonel Hall, I'm sure you've met him.
So he's a full burden, he was a full burden.